I was at looking, Amanda. Hey, morning, everyone. Hope you can hear me back in the cheap seats. We don't bite. Alrighty. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to invite Clerk and Recorder, Dallas Schroeder, up to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Father, we thank you so much for today. Father, every day that we have is a gift from you, and we acknowledge that, and we thank you for that. We just pray that you'll give us the courage and fortitude to make every day count. Father, as we head into this meeting, I just pray for clear communication and understanding between all parties. Father, this meeting can be orderly and pleasing in the way your children should interact with each other. Father, I am mindful of the weekend and the fire down south, and we're thankful that that fire did not spread more than it did. And we were once again reminded of our first responders with fire and law enforcement, Father, how they serve us and put themselves in harm's way. We're thankful that none were hurt, and we'll just pray for a hedge protection on them as they serve us. Father, do you pray for our country, the turmoil and chaos that it's in? May it cease, and may we, as a country, turn back to you. It's in the name of Christ I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dallas. It's 9:02. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Thayer.
Yep.
Commissioner Pettit.
Yep. First item we have is approval of the agenda, and I understand we have one change.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with one addition, with that being in the land use portion, item J-5, Diamond Ridge DG 210026. For some reason, didn't get the agenda. The applicant thought it would be here today. Definitely. We're going to. Definitely.
Excuse me, Commissioner Thayer. If you could turn your microphone on, that would be great.
Does that mean I need to repeat myself? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with one addition in the land use portion of the agenda, Diamond Ridge DG 210026. It was missed on the agenda, but it had been, the applicant knew that it was supposed to be today, so we will recommend continuing it till 10:27, 2021. And it'll be item J-5.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add item J-5 to open and continue consideration of a Diamond Ridge land use application. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Alrighty. First item of business is the consent agenda. Got several items on today for the folks that are visiting today. The consent agenda is generally just kind of housekeeping items or things that are need our approval, but really are, have been fully coordinated. So, some items like approving mylar's and site plans that have been submitted and previously approved by community development, approval of financial vouchers. Today, we've got two items that are agreements with local fire districts. As applications come in, we'll make sure that they've coordinated appropriately with the fire districts. And the final was just a definition change in one of our regulations. With that, I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item up we have is elected officials, department head, staff reports. Did you have anything today, Dallas, or no? Sam?
Commissioners, we do have some guests here. Callie, you want to come on up and?
I'm asking about Willie Wilkins.
Great, Willie?
Good morning, everybody.
You need a bigger cup of coffee? Hey, Willie?
Hi, I'm William Wilkins, one of the Elbert County Extension 4H agents, and obviously one of my big duties is the 4H program. Last year was National 4H Week. Your meeting is this week, so that's why we're here. I want to thank you guys for having us to come speak. This is the fourth time I've been to be here for this week and talk about the 4H program. And the program is the kids that are behind me. We have a great roster, so I'm going to let them talk about what their experience is and let them share with you guys what they're learning, all the things that 4H encompasses, because sometimes I think we think it's one thing or a few things, but it's more than what everyone imagines. So, I'm going to let them share. Josie Thomas.
Alrighty. Tell us about all the things.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you all are well. Like you said, my name is Josie Thomas. So, before I begin, this is going to be my ninth year in 4H. This past year, I had the opportunity to be the Elbert County Youth Council President, so this means that I got to help make important decisions about what's going on with 4H in our county. For example, we got to play in the Fair Dance, which was so much fun this year. And then additionally, I've been able to be the Youth Council Vice President. This year, I'm going to be our Girl Senator and Parliamentarian, so I get to make sure that our meetings run according to parliamentary procedure. And as Girl Senator, I have the opportunity to travel the state and go to different camps and things, and I get to help vote on issues that are at a state level. So, I get to vote on who our district four offices will be held by. I get to vote on a bunch of things like that, and I'm super excited to be able to do that. In addition to these, I've been able to participate in the horse program. So, we've been to nationals, we have a couple of state titles, so that's been really fantastic. And additionally, I compete in the shooting sports program. And I think that it's really important that we recognize that 4H is not only livestock, but there are other projects as well. For example, we've just added a welding program to our 4H program, so that's been really exciting. We've had a couple people compete in that already this year at Fair, and they did super That's pretty much all I have to say. Are there any questions?
So, the camps, I'm assuming last year, they probably didn't happen, or did they?
Yeah, so our camps last year, they did go on, they were just virtual, so.
Much better.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dominic Ritchie.
Good morning. My name is Dominic Ritchie, and this is my fourth year in 4H. And I participate in the shooting sports and woodworking projects in 4H. And I'm also very heavily involved in all of the leadership side of 4H. I am the Running Creek Treasurer, the Youth Council Treasurer, Boy's Senator, and a Colorado State 4H Shooting Sports Ambassador. So, I've had the great opportunity to be a leader on the state level and the county level, too. So, I helped run workshops at all of the statewide 4H conferences, and that was a very great opportunity to, you know, work on my leadership skills and to become a better leader. And going to all the camps and conferences, they're all very, they're very good for helping with leadership skills and just developing and becoming a better person, I guess. I've made a lot of friends from around the state and just lifelong connections that are very important. 4H has definitely helped me prepare for the workforce and to, you know, hold a job, so that's a very good thing. And I think that's about all I have. So, I'll turn it over to the Obrecks now.
Thank you.
With that, I suppose it's my turn. All right. I am Mercy Obrecks. I am 15 years old, and I have been in 4H for about six years. And over the past six years, I have competed in dog, market pig, market poultry, and show poultry. I've competed in quilting, crochet, model rocketry, and exhibit rocketry, upcycle your style, shooting sports, and rabbitry. Obviously, I didn't do all of these at the same time. That would have been a lot.
Thank your mom here.
Yeah. Many of these, I have competed at the state level as well, and in show rabbits, I was able to compete at the national level. I will do many of these things far into the future. I still have rabbits, and I will continue to quilt and crochet. I have learned many things in 4H, including responsibility, charisma, and patience. I've worked, I've also learned how to work in my community and how to be more outgoing and do more community service. I have learned about animals and the best way to take care of them, including last year, I was able to have the fun, interesting, I should say, experience of butchering my own turkeys. All of these things come back to 4H. I would never have shown rabbits or pigs without 4H. Many of my best friends I met through 4H. I plan on becoming a vet tech for my future career, all because of 4H. 4H has helped many nationwide to gain responsibility and taught them hard work. 4H has been a valuable part of many lives, including my own and my family's. To this, I say we have learned by doing. Thank you for making it possible. To this, I turn it over to my little brother.
Thank you.
My name is Marshall Obreck. This is my fourth year in participating in 4H. I have participated in market pigs, market turkeys, rabbit project, shooting sports, model rockets, and I have enjoyed competing at the state level in model rockets.
Sorry.
And rabbit judging. By selling my animals, and I've been able to put money toward my future, I plan to have a career in aviation, and rockets have helped me learn more about flight. 4H has given me time with my friends and experiments I'd never have otherwise, I'd never have otherwise. Thank you for supporting 4H and making this possible.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Just want to thank you guys again for having us speak on behalf of 4H. I think you kind of see the diverse things they do and the group that's here, and again, thanks for supporting the 4H program and the Extension Office.
Thank you, Willie.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. It's actually probably one of the better times of the year when you guys come in and talk to us, because there's a lot of wonderful things going on out there. It's good to see the support you have from the community. I mean, I know on the market sale side this year was tremendous, certainly outdid lots of other surrounding, much bigger counties in supporting you, so keep with it and bring more kids in. And Callie, thank you for what you do. Willie, parents, you know, you guys just, it's one of the bright spots in the county, so really do appreciate it. I'd just like to give you guys a round of applause.
Commissioner, what about a photo op?
Let's do that. Come on up. Yes?
Commissioner, I just, if we're ready for the next staff report, I'll give a brief update on the bird's eye fire. This happened on Friday. We got notification. We did a partial activation of our EOC. Shane Pines called in, Roden Bridge, and myself, and Communications to come in to kind of monitor the situation. This wasn't El Paso County Fire. Peyton Fire District responded, as did Elbert Fire District, and I know the other districts were ready to come if needed. There was three counties that were involved in this, with dispatch coming from Douglas County, and then our Emergency Operations Center and El Paso Emergency Operations Center. We did call in air support for that, just because there were structures in the immediate area, and winds were predicted to be getting, picking up, so we wanted to get on top of it real quick. About a 25-acre fire. We sent crews home, and Roden Bridge came down with every tanker that we had, just in case we needed it, which was three tankers with a total of about 50,000, 60,000 gallons if we needed it. We sent home Roden Bridge about 6:30 or 7:00, and then came back at 8:00 in the morning, and I think Elbert Fire showed back up also in the morning and just did some knocking down the trees and putting out the hotspots and some of that. So, we, they did some evacuation in, on the south side of that fire, and I think they also did some evacuation on one road that cut into Elbert County just a little bit. One structure was lost, and I think that was a residence, and there's an investigation still going on on the cause of the fire. Be happy to answer any questions. But we jumped on it hard and heavy, and everybody worked great and took care of it.
Appreciate that, and I'm sure it was good for Shane to open up the EOC and see what he's got going.
Yep. That, you know, that was a nice, gentle, easy way for him to do his first activation of the EOC, and now with snow in the forecast, we'll see if we can get him fire and snow in the same week. We'll see how that goes.
Well, I think our preference is he supported emergencies in other counties, but hopefully we get enough snow and moisture that we're not fighting fires.
Yep.
I mean, I know we've gone back and forth in the past between red flag days and then road closures for snow and back and forth. Anything for you guys? Thanks. Alrighty. At this point, we'll open up for public comment. Amanda, did we have anybody that wanted to be called or sent anything in? I didn't see anything, so, okay. Anybody in the room that has anything they'd like to pass on to us? See and none. We'll close public comment at this time. Got a couple of discussion items. The first is just an update on the development of the 2022 budget. Sam?
So, and I've got Tony here, our finance manager, so we are working fast and furious to get the draft budget to you guys by the 15th of October. It will go into the 27th of October BOCC packet, so for the public to take a look at. Following that, we'll have a work-study session with you guys and public comment on the budget, and then statutory deadline, and then final budget approval in sometime in December. Right now, I can report that the fund balances look healthy, that the directors and electeds did a very nice job in prioritizing their expenses. We, the reconciliation process was a lot smoother this year. We are looking at about $2 million, a little over $2 million in increase in the general fund, which will cover most of the expenses that we are expecting. I know that there's also a request from the commissioners to increase the stability fund or the reserves, and then we are going to be able to continue to do the $500,000 annual maintenance updates that have deferred maintenance in things that have been done. The ARP money, we are starting to get those quotes trimmed down a little bit and finalized. There will be a project list for ARP funding that will have closer to the December deadline for the budget, but we do expect to start, we have started spending some of that money, but with a final rule on that, which we don't expect until the end of December, we're a little cautious on what we're going to be able to spend for in 2022 and beyond, but we want to make sure that we don't get left on the hook if they change the rules on us midstream. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the budget will be balanced, and we expect to have, again, have that in your boxes and in your email by late on the 14th, which is tomorrow, or Tony and I have to come in on Friday and finish it up.
We can give you till midnight on Friday.
Thank you. I will take till midnight on Friday if necessary.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Just a quick on the ARP funding. I know for CARES, that could only be spent on budgeted stuff. Is the ARPA money budgeted for spending?
We have not seen.
Or is that off budget but tracked?
We have not seen anything in the interim rules that said it was for unfunded items, which was the big hang-up on, big requirement from CARES Act. So, what we have seen in the initial guidance is that almost everything that qualified for CARES Act would be also qualified under ARP, but it didn't mention anything about budgeted versus non-budgeted that we've seen. Tony, is that correct? Come on up, Tony.
Hi, Tony McComber, Elbert County Finance. That's correct. There's budgeted and unbudgeted projects are being done for the ARP funds, so without the restriction.
And I guess the more specific question was, are we actually budgeting the expenditures of projected expenditures?
Yes. Yeah, so Sam's working with the.
Yeah. That's an expansion of the.
Correct.
Budget kind of outside of our normal revenue, so.
Yep, yep. It's all going through the grant fund to make sure that we have a good plan for the projects that need to be completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Someplace, if we look at the, we got $5.2 million in ARP funding, 2.6 which we've received already. We expect to spend close to half a million dollars in 2021, probably a million to a million and a half in 2022, and then the rest will be spread out over the next couple years and then obligated through the end of '26.
Thanks. Alrighty. So, moving on to action items, approval of the September 22.
I didn't discuss that.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. Can't follow my own check marks, so. So, the discussion of the Colorado opioid settlement and MOU. Sorry, Bart.
No, no.
Need to jump over you.
I can speak to that. Bart Greer, County Attorney. Yeah, we have been looking at this for some time, obviously, the potential for an opioid settlement related to companies such as Purdue Pharma and some of the other companies that manufacture the opioids that led to a large part of the crisis. We're getting to a point where settlements are occurring on a national level and certainly for the state of Colorado, and so this is something that the county and the state, as well as other, you know, local governments are all participating in. It's a, it's an agreement that a bunch of people are going to be signing, a bunch of governments are going to be signing. Essentially, the more signatories they have, the more money that comes in as a whole and is really able to be spread to the various local governments such as ourselves. So, that's what's going on here. I think we're looking at least at around $300 million from the state of Colorado. Not quite sure we have an actual number for what that would mean at the end of the day for Elbert County, but there's certainly going to be enough money that it'll make a difference with respect to the programs, that that will be utilized for either locally or regionally. So, that's what the entire MOU and settlement discussion is about, and what the approval or signature by the county would mean for Elbert County. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
I guess it's my understanding that we're going to be doing a regional northwest or northeast region or whatever to try and get those counties all together and get a larger amount so that something can actually be done, because I think if Elbert County went by itself, the amount of money that we would get wouldn't be really significant enough to accomplish anything.
Yeah, Commissioner, that is my understanding as well, that we're looking at doing something with that money on a regional basis. Certainly, the economies of scale and what can be accomplished by pooling that money together looks like it's going to be more impactful than whatever Elbert County can do on its own, and so that's my understanding as to what is going to occur with the money. So, this is a discussion that local governments are having across the state right now, and it is something that, discussion about a signature from those local governments is something people in my position are having with their elected officials across the state as well.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. It's pretty straightforward, so I think we can probably take it for action at our next meeting, but Sam, could you touch base with the municipalities, because they also have an allocation if they sign up, and I'm not sure if they don't, whether that rolls back up under the county's cap or if that's just forfeited to the state? So, I think we're in better shape if they all sign on. But, yeah, I think CCI did an awful lot of work to, with the state, to set up the distribution plan, so it actually got out to the corners of the state and didn't all get sucked up into the Denver metro area where $300 million can disappear overnight without anybody knowing what happened to it or no real impact, but if we can get five or six million out here, it can make a big difference, so appreciate that. Action items. Now we're up. I'm back on track, so. First item we have is just approval of the minutes from the September 22 meeting.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the September 22, 2021 minutes as presented and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the September 22 minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the next is approval of participation in the Metro Down Payment Assistance Program. I know Bart, you've done some work on changes to the MOU.
Correct. Yeah, so once again, Bart Greer, County Attorney. I know we do have a representative here if there's other questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward based on the discussion that we had at our prior meeting and some of the discussions that I've been able to take part in in between that time and today. As you are most likely aware, this is a down payment assistance program that is essentially providing authority for the Metro DPA program to act on our behalf in assisting Elbert County residents. And so, we've actually been approached in a couple of different avenues for similar things like this. You know, at this point. And so, um, that is something that was specifically discussed. Both the county manager and myself, um, were asked, um, and asking about that with the program, um, and we've been assured, yes, that is something that not only is that house designed to work, we can provide you information, reports, that sort of thing that will show exactly how many people within unincorporated Elbert County can in fact be helped. Um, so we should be able to measure the impact on an empirical basis, um, as to what the impact and benefit to Elbert County is and their participation with this program. Um, so that's a good thing. In addition, uh, the Down Payment Assistance Program is something that i, if it is not being beneficial, if it's not meeting the needs of the county itself, it's something that we can withdraw from. And so, and working on the specifics of the, um, participation agreement, that is, uh, something that was discussed as well. Um, and so I am satisfied with the, um, language of the agreement, and, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, that we do have a representative here if there's additional questions as well, but at this point, I'm recommending approval of that agreement at this point in time.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. One is it'll, this will make, uh, home buyers have, be, be able to qualify for mortgages easier. And then the second part is, is that it is at no cost to the county.
Correct, yeah, this is, uh, a self-funded program, or there, there's a way that it is funded that is, is not costing the county anything, and it, uh, it does allow certain people, um, to have assistance with down payment, um, assistance from this program. Not everybody qualifies, but it is certainly going to allow more people to, um, be able to own homes because of the assistance, the available assistance for, um, down payments, um, being readily available, and therefore people who may not have been able to afford homes previously might now be able to afford the down payment and therefore home.
I know, uh, one of the local lenders is now, uh, on her advertisements or whatever that they are participating in this program. I know the county hasn't approved it, but the town of Elizabeth has. So that is not something that she has promoted before, but I've seen it in the last month that at least, there's at least one local lender that is participating in this program.
Yep. Sir, I know you traveled down here. Did you have anything you'd like to, to add? Um, we had a pretty good presentation last time we were here, so, yeah.
Questions on top of what was already said, so if there's any further questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
No, I appreciate that. I don't think, I don't have any, I don't think we don't, so, but I appreciate you coming down to, to witness the, the motion and consideration. And then I think again, Sam, just in, in your chatting with Kiowa, and I'm not sure if you reached out to the other two municipalities in the, in the county, uh, Kiowa and Semler, but I know Kiowa's got some, some projected growth, um, there'll be some new homes available at some point here in the future, and that might benefit folks looking there. Um, so with that, um, I'd accept a motion to approve participation in the Metro DPA program.
I'll make a motion. We, uh, participate in the Metro Mortgage Assistance, uh, Program and approve the resolution authorizing, uh, Elbert County's participation in the Metro Mortgage Assistance Plus Program and authorizing the execution of the delegation and participation agreement and other documents in conjunction therewith.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to approve participation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So for, um, board planning, um, I guess we'll, we'll take up, uh, for action, the opioid settlement at our next meeting. Just within the consent, we probably need just to acknowledge receipt of the draft budget on the 15th, um, obviously minutes. Uh, the 28th, the day after our next meeting is, um, is first responders' day, so I talked to Shane about bringing in some of his folks to, to, um, recognize that the day prior. And then I think, well, whatever we have that's continued from land use. Do you have anything you wanna have added next? Okay, that gets us going. So with that...
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah.
We could add on, uh, the presentation of the district, districting lines for next, whether it's discussion or action, we should be ready to go.
Okay. Thanks. Alrighty, with that, it's, uh, 9:36, and we're in recess. We'll reconvene here at 1:00 PM to consider land use here items. Thanks.